There, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hey. Here I am, we're good to go, waiting for everybody else.
Nicely done, someday you're gonna work for Raytheon, Amy, I know it.
Oh man, no way, I'm a simple person.
Nonsense, that high-tech stuff, you've got it mastered.
No way, are you kidding? You should ask Joe, when we got Alexa in the office, oh, that was a nightmare. Joe can attest to my non-brilliance of trying to get Alexa to work in the office.
I just found out that that the Peacock TV thing that that Xfinity foisted on me, that the remote has a voice feature that if you activate it, it actually makes their incredibly bad interface easier to use. Like you can just say, "Find NFL football," or "Find Yellowstone," or and then it just it just comes up on your TV without constantly clicking through these inscrutable menus.
Did you know that?
Yes, do that, just hit the thing and it'll say, "Do you want to activate the voice control?" Use it.
Do it, I have that at home, I use it all the time.
Good evening, Hershey, Betsy, Amy, and Dave.
Hello.
Good evening.
David. We can't see you.
I did it yet?
Everybody take a breath in and let it out and count.
Meditate to begin.
The nose out through the mouth.
I'm try I'm trying to make healthier choices, so I got this like giant water bottle.
Oh my god. It's like five gallons of water a day?
Yes, it's a gallon jug, I don't, I can't do it, but I I'm trying.
Do you want to work in some scheduled breaks while we're meeting this evening? Depending upon duration of the meeting or every 15 minutes you need or what?
Yeah. So, is is Ken there in person?
No.
He's just arriving.
Oh, perfect. What's up, Joe?
Just enough that it catches.
You have a name now?
I have a name, wow.
So, Amy. So I can see you, but like I really can't see.
I know. Ken has to talk in order for you to see him.
Oh, okay. So can maybe can we try that out? So, can, maybe can we try that out?
Talking.
Yeah, Ken, tell us a little about yourself.
I was almost late, because somebody locked me out.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I worked for East Airport for twenty-two years, and got into some of the planning and developing there, so seen my fair share of regulations and completely different animals in this place, but imagine some of the structural crossover. Eager to learn, hopefully, I'm probably just gonna observe you guys for a while, I see a lot of a lot of knowledge just last time came through, and hopefully lean on you guys until I get a handle on things.
Great, well, welcome. So, I will start the meeting, today is Wednesday, January, now I forgot. Nineteenth, January nineteenth, seven oh two PM. Call to order are the planning board meeting. Take a roll call, Hershey Hirschcock.
Here.
Greg Zinser.
Here.
Ken Conley. And Manley is not here, correct?
Correct.
And then Betsy Randall, I'm here, so we have four members, which is a quorum. Great. Is anybody here from the public that has anything to talk about that's not on the agenda tonight? Speak now, or forever hold your peace.
Are we gonna have to put our heads down on our desks when we vote? I'm just, okay.
Okay, so, I just want to remind everybody, just to note from this, for the start of the meeting, is that we will do our very best to follow Robert's rules of order, I've been studying, and I just appreciate everybody, you know, helping me out, but I will, definitely, David, if you're okay with it, you'll be my point person, so if at any time I need to pause conversation, or, you know, I'll just ask, you know, point of order, David, please tell, tell me how to proceed, so that we can just stay on, on the right path. Um, okay, so, the first thing on our agenda tonight is discussion item one, continuing to review the ordinance amendment from town council regarding the charge, the town council charge medical marijuana registered caregiver home occupation performance standards. Um, I'll open it up, Greg, do you want to start? Actually, David, I'm sorry, Greg, David, would you like to just go over the documents that you sent us for the draft and explain them?
Yes, I can, just, I had the document pulled up, and, wait. Uh, nope, sorry, I had the, the ordinance. So, if Greg does want to start us off, I'll like, make sure I have the right document in front of me, that's fine by me, hold on one second.
Well, I think it probably would be appropriate, Dave, you did a great job laying everything out in the past, you've done screen sharing, kind of walked through it, but I found your information very helpful, very straightforward, methodical. So, I mean, I would say defer to you and go through it, and then we can go through it point by point.
Here, sorry, we've been, we've been, I've worked, been working on a couple of different zoning regulations regarding shoreline, I mean, excuse me, regarding solar ordinances, including the one we're gonna discuss later tonight. So, I had that on my mind, so I had the wrong document pulled up, I apologize. Okay, so it is, there we are, okay, this is from the January fourteenth memo that I wrote to the board. Okay, so, what, what I tried to do is, I really tried to spell this out, basically, the, for those of us newer watching at home, the town council had referred an item to the planning board, which was to talk about how home occupations or medical marijuana could be allowed as a home occupation, and really what was brought up was, you know, the difference between a small sort of home business, it takes care of a handful of patients, and a commercial growing facility where they're gonna have more production, they're gonna have larger spaces, and it all sort of stemmed, this conversation stemmed out of when we were, when the board was reviewing growing medical marijuana, growing, and where should it be allowed in town? And we were working on an ordinance at the time was to regulate what marijuana growing would look like in the industrial district, and that zoning amendment was passed by the town council. But part of that discussion really went around the the medical marijuana cultivation growing facility, sort of decided that, okay, three growers and more would need to grow in a, an actual industrial park property where we can easier buffer against objectionable note, noise, odors, whatever, like other industrial type uses, however, this left us that sort of window, okay, what about the home? The people who are growing at home, who want to run a small growing operation as they're allowed in their main state law within their homes, and so this left us the sort of, there was no problem with if one person wants to do it, but what about the up to three, which then triggers you into the industrial district? So, this regulation was handed down, or excuse me, I should say, this ordinance was handed down to the planning board from the council saying, basically, figure out language that we should be looking at in addition to what we may do of home occupation standards, or whatever. Now, so, that's the real issue that we're looking at right now. So, that being said, I tried to draft an ordinance, and there's no, the board can tell me, I'm gonna phrase this carefully, where in the zoning ordinance, this section of the ordinance should be located, so that has yet to be determined exactly, from the conversations that we had at planning board meetings and town council joint planning board meetings alike, the direction was sort of, how did we make this into a home occupation? So, I started the ordinance, which I may start shares, sharing my screen, if you don't mind. So, I tried to go through all of this sort of background information at the beginning, or, at the beginning of my report, to sort of explain to you, here's what's in place already, here's how we got to where we're at, and here's what the charges from the town council, I tried to sort of organize the report in that way. So, when this was, uh, when this was sent to the planning board, uh, there, there, they stated, "We would like to ensure that following items are addressed, and trust the planning board to address in the way they see fit," and that was in, that's a quote. And they listed eight, eight different things that we should look at, or the board should look at. The hours of operation, square footage restrictions, odor mitigation, traffic control, traffic control considerations like appointment only and or no drive-through, lighting standards for, so you don't have a commercial glow about the building, signage, any new definitions that may come about from this ordinance, and any recommended amendments, and because of the prior discussions, we had been looked, we've been told to look at these items, and there may be some other things that came into that. So, what I did last week is, I provided the board all of this background information, and then I sent a document, which was a framework, if you will, I tried to look at what is required of all home occupations currently, and if we're looking at this use in particular, and possibly any similar compatible-ish uses, we should probably be looking at them in relation to other home occupations that the town allows, barbers, tax attorneys, things like that. So, with that said, um, what I've got here, and let me screen share, hold on one sec, like, is everyone on board with me right now before I move on?
Yes.
Okay, just one, if I get ahead of myself, now I gotta figure out which doc, which document I'm looking at here, medical marijuana, there we are. Okay, this is one that's on my other screen, now you should be looking at a screen that says 1.40 dash four three, home occupations. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, good, I just got the sign, okay, so, home occupations minor. So, the home occupation ordinance is located in chapter one forty dash forty-three, home occupations. There's a minor home occupation category, and that I did not propose to change. We also, the ordinance has a major home occupation, and there was notes that said reserved, or, because there had been some of the original conditions struck out at the very beginning, so the numbering kind of started off, so what I did is, I listed under this kind of major home occupation, I originally listed medical marijuana, registered caregivers, and I also left a section for reserve, a reserve in the event the board says, hey, this is kind of similar to this use, or, it's kind of the same without the marijuana smell, but it has this kind of smell about it, or, or whatever, so I left a reserve space for later additions to this ordinance. So, then I went through major occupation, a home occupation standards, and I sort of copied how it is written in the ordinance for the, for the home occupations that we just talked about. And so, the application, it talks about municipal approval requires, this would be a major home occupation, the reviewing authority for this type of use would rest, as it's drafted right now, with the code enforcement officer, like all the other home occupations. So, an applicant would come in, they would schedule a meeting to meet with Joe, and Joe, as the code officer, would say, yeah, you meet all these standards, what about this, what about that? Could you give me some more information? If it meets the standards that we're gonna go over, that means that Joe gets to review it, it hasn't yet triggered that planning board level. But again, that's up to the board, but the, the thing that I did take away from prior discussions was, they also don't want to mar down people who are trying to do the right thing, and sort of report themselves, and, you know, sort of almost self-regulate to be bogged down by excessive fees and things like that, so, this doesn't talk about fee structure, but there it is. So, municipal approval is required, I put in the odor mitig, odor mitigation standards, and that went from one through C, and this listed, I pulled from the ordinance, because I want to make sure that we have the exact same language, no use shall emit product odor across the property lines in such a quantity as to readily detectable at any point along the property lines. Ordinance language that we view that's used elsewhere, odor control plan, major home occupation shall submit to the town or odor control plan, that gives some details about that plan and a maintenance plan that if, if the code office gets a complaint about, they can go and say, when did you last clean the filters on this, you know, we're getting some odor complaints, we need to mitigate those now. So, um, I also, as we had talked about previously, this was, I think, about a month or so ago now, I think it was right before the New Year's, after the fact mitigation, and this, I put in that sort of built on, if responding to an odor, an odor complaint from a cultivation facility with approved odor control plan, which is insufficient, code officer gets to go in there and work with the property owner, rather than initiating a code violation, order or action, so that's, again, if someone's trying to work with the town, they come, Joe would work with them on that. Application plans, a couple of things on this that we'd want to put in there, or not. A property plan identifying all streets, buildings, driveway, and parking for the residential use, as any maximum of two parking spaces for client pickup. So, we can come back to that, and all of these things that I have added, we can come back to the property plan, so a location of all proposed exterior lighting, including any motion, motion activated security system lighting. This has been a big issue when I've been working with other communities, because people don't want security lighting in a residential neighborhood to stay on twenty-four seven. Same with any lighting for parking with clients. So, we wanted to try, and the, the ordinance is written to limit the number of people who could come as clients, and also, we don't want the neighborhood to be, have objectional, objectionable light beyond a normal residential use in the neighborhood. So, activated security systems, they want, may want or need that, you know, if they have problems with people trying to get into their homes, like my house, I have a motion detector lighting around the house, and it'll go on if a deer triggers it, or prowler of that nature, so, all exterior lighting downward directed, that's to keep the night skies ordinance in place, and a floor plan, just a detailed floor plan identifying the residential use caregiver operations type things, that can be shared with the fire department, police department, if need be. They will probably some, mark some of this information confidential, which is, which is fine, but I think they, at least the emergency services need to get that planned. The, the next items are taken straight from what was the remaining items under the major home occupation regulation, so these were just cut and pasted straight from the original doc, document, but I did make a note near signs that also seems to be a neighborhood trigger point. So, I put two-sided signs, either ground mounted or blade, which, you know, something hanging off the side of the building, or under an eave or something that nature, the board may want to discuss what kind of signage they want to allow beyond what would normally be allowed in the zoning ordinance, or the sign ordinance, I should say. Um, no goods should be sold, which have not been substantially made, substantially altered on the premise, and or accessory services on the premises, for which those are customarily incidental to the service rendered by the home occupation, and this is, again, this is the same language, it's already in there, and I put a note in here, which is an important one. Uh, the caregiver business, as it were, is a primary use of growing medical marijuana, so incidental, the word incidental doesn't quite fit, because there, everything of their home occupation is being built, or is being produced for grown for retail sales. So, does that mean they are limited to delivery sales, so, only, what about customer traffic limitations, hours of operation? There, there could be a number of items that we do, so hours of operation, operation is, is also in here. I threw nine to seven in there just as a discussion point, we needed the board to want to talk Saturdays, Sundays type thing. Uh, there should be sufficient off-street parking on the premises for customers, clients, employees. Uh, the property should, so I put a note, so all of my little notes to these things are listed in blue. Uh, major home occupation, shall be carried out wholly in the principal building, or building, or other structure to it, and shall utilize at a maximum no more than five hundred feet, or twenty-five percent of the gross floor area of the principal building, whichever is left, so, two items of importance on this one is the five hundred square foot limitation. If you have two people growing marijuana in their house under main state law, they can each have five hundred square feet of growing area, however, if there are two people growing in the house, that means they can also share water, you know, seedling space and things like that, there's a lot of regulation, so this also, we need, we'd probably want to talk about accessory structures. Someone could technically come in and ask Joe, he wants to put up a detached garage, two thousand square feet, three thousand square feet, which is unusual for a barn, or something like that in the residential districts, or rural districts, say. He issues it for a garage, and all of a sudden, it becomes a growing operation, which is three times the size of the actual house, or, so we, we need to make sure that we're, we're handling project creep, and, you know, sort of confining things to avoid complaints in the department, outside storage. Uh, so, that, that's really the, the bulk of the ordinance, it's really just where I've added a couple of those small items in there, and then with the definitions, uh, we had the definition from before, so we put in the medical marijuana cultivation growing facilities. I listed this, because this was the term for the, what we looked at when we are looking at the industrial zone for commercial. When we are looking at the industrial zone for commercial growers. So I listed this language because this section over here talking about three or more registered caregivers. We need to talk about then two and under, so one or two registered caregivers in the home. This was left an example. The other issue that they did within the industrial district was uh, restricting medical cultivation, growing facilities in the industrial district for to twenty-five hundred square feet. Which is a limiting factor in the industrial zone. So my rationale was we are sort of talking about two and two people and under, uh, less than twenty-five hundred square feet. Probably no, uh, less than a thousand square feet if we talk about knowing there's only two people there. So that has kind of, uh, brought this to a head. With that, uh, I can answer any questions that you might have. I did send this out, uh, last week. I can't remember the fifteenth or something like that. And I know I've got some comments back from Greg is the only one I believe. Greg is, that is correct? Yeah, okay. So with that, others, uh, probably need to have, uh, some homework or, or, or something to, uh, to get them up to speed on that. We can discuss it sort of, oh, uh, right now, or if the board would prefer to go through your documents, send me suggestions. As this is a public hearing, anybody who, who uh, who's watching at home or hears about this meeting can also send into the code office any comments that they may want raised, uh, kind of thing. So we can address it hopefully, uh, in a short period of time. When we started looking at this ordinance. A couple of weeks ago or so, again, when we restarted visiting it, there was talk about, you know, I think, and I still do think that this could be a fairly quick, uh, ordinance turnaround. So as many comments that we get upfront. Uh, will be really useful to me, but I need your input because I'm, I've just built the framework right now and sort of put in suggestions of what things we may want to look at. You know, if suddenly numbers start changing, that may trigger, um, an ordinance amendment to the industrial zone or something. I, I don't know. So, um, we need to figure out where in the ordinance we want to go. I, I again, started with the home occupation ordinance. If the board feels it should be, it'd be better served linked somewhere else in the ordinance, we can do that. Um, I'm trying to keep it with other sort of like things that need special review. Not necessarily a home occupations. We can put that, uh, in another section of the ordinance, but that triggers planning board review for these sort of more home occupation type uses.
Um, David, I just want to bring up, can you go back to sign one?
Yes, so, uh, slides here, yeah. Can you see it still?
Yes.
Okay.
So that does not line up with our ordinance on signs in residential districts in our book. So the one in the book says, hang on a second. Uh, the following provisions apply to signs proposed in the residential zoning districts. No sign or portion of a sign structure shall exceed eight feet in height measured from the adjacent road surface. Um, only one freestanding sign, no larger than six square feet in area on each side, blah, blah, blah. Anyways, there's only like two points, but I would love for them to be the same. So that we don't have problems later on in confusion. Well, I'm a home occupation or I'm a, I'm a business in a residential zone. Because technically they have, if they were to look right now, they would have more. They'd have more, a little more leeway.
Yeah.
In some ways, in other ways, there's, I guess, more.
Right. So, uh, a couple of things, uh, to hopefully answer your question. The ordinance that I took this from is the online ordinance. Which, if, are you going through your paper copy?
I am going.
When you're doing that review? Okay, um, I, I don't know when you guys got most recently updated copies of the ordinance. I believe they, as, as everyone starts with the board, they, they come in with a full ordinance, but I, I would ask Amy to maybe check on that. I, I I don't have anything to do with that prep.
No, I know. I'm pretty positive. I'm pretty positive that's current because I just looked it up a couple of months ago. Maybe like two months ago.
What is it? I'm sorry, is the actual one?
It's one forty twenty-six signs in zoning ordinance.
Hey, Betsy. Is it only for commercial, though, um, properties? The sign, I don't think anybody is allowed an eight foot by four foot sign in a residential area. No, am I wrong?
Um, it says the following provisions apply to signs proposed in the residential zoning districts. So whether or not it's a business or not.
Okay.
So that may.
Amy, if you could bring that up. So just confirm.
Or I can do that. So David, you got your information off of the ordinances that are on our website, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this isn't under home occupations. This is separately under an ordinance specifically just for signs.
So we, we may need to put an amendment in for and ordinance, either update the sign ordinance or have some reference to the sign ordinance in, uh, in the actual ordinance that we're working on now. The, the thing I wanted to pull up is, um, in the home occupations minor. The language is there should not be, uh, there should be no exterior signage. Hold on a second. I'm getting a weird message here that I can't see. Uh, and no other or onsite advertising from the exterior shall be displayed. So that's in a minor. I believe I've seen in town doctors or, or say, uh, tax attorney or something like that. Uh, maybe it's been in a, a commercial zone or a different zone, but I, I took this language, you know, sort of from above and Okay, and so the signs then down in the, uh, excuse me, so the sign section in the in the ordinance that I put. Uh, I just put the home occupations limited to one sign, the larger than two square feet each side of the sign. Which is more than, more than what they're allowed for other home occupations. So I don't know, Joe may want to chime in and I don't know how they've done it, or if we have a conflicting ordinance technically. If we have a conflicting ordinance, some more stringent applies.
Yeah, Greg.
Did, I wonder if, I mean, I don't think we're going to resolve this issue tonight. I think we need to look into it more, but I wonder if the sign issue. You know, uh, it's one thing to have a sign for a home occupation. I have not looked at the, what Betsy is referring to, but I wonder if that is more for like a wayfinding type of sign or signs that may be put up for general advertisements. Uh, I, I, I don't know. Uh, I do see a distinction there that you know, if the DOT wants to come in and put a sign for something. Or the town wants to put in a side for saying, hey, you know, downtown here, waterfront over there. If there is a wayfinding sign issue versus like a business sign issue. What, and that may be why under the home occupations, it's limiting the actual signage that you can display. Again, I, I think there is a, a difference between the two.
That, there is and, and the wayfinding signs, different municipalities, uh, handle them different. Some basically defer to the state and say, if the state will give you one, that's fine. If it's a wayfinding, uh, finding sign, the state does have regulations on how many signs can be located near a turning point. You can't have, you know, twenty different signs making twenty different turns uh, to your business, you know, sort of serpenting through the Lewiston area to get to somewhere in Gorm or something. You can't, you can't do that. So they do have standards on that. This is actually talking about signage on the property advertising what you're doing. So the easy way is to say you can't have a sign. Advertising that you're a caregiver working, you know, growing in your home for a medical, uh, a medical user who has a, a license card. You could say you can't have any signs. On the flip side of that is if you have a small discreet sign, you know, small sign, I don't, one by six or just saying. You know, the, the, even the applicants or the, the property owner's name or something, or some kind of a name tag. That at least would prevent people from knocking on the wrong door and you know, causing your neighbors distress or something like that. So however the board wants to, to do it and, and I agree with, I don't think would, a, a, as Greg said, I don't think we'll get through the whole thing tonight, but I'm looking for points that you may have seen in it that really is going to say, yeah, like the sign issue, we, we really need to dwell into that and, and I I don't know how the board feels about it. No signs, should we look at signs? Uh, I can certainly do some research about the existing sign events in residential districts. And provide you that information for the next time.
That, that would be great, David. Um, just to clarify that, I think the the, what problems we've had in the past is parts of our ordinance that are conflicting. And if we can just prevent that and not have to go back to the drawing, you know, have issues arise from that. I mean, I say let's pursue it. Um, Greg?
Yeah, a question for Dave. Dave, are you able to bring up my comments just so I, so I don't have to go through? I mean, I'm happy to have you share them. It's
Okay. Now the question is, can I? Hold on, I, I'm sure. I've got like a hundred documents up here, so, uh, hold on.
No, that's fine.
I, I gotta save most of these, hold on. That should do it. All right.
Betsy?
Yes.
I'm gonna have you. Joe's gonna talk it. Joe is gonna make the comment on the signs.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, the home occupation for major, it specifically says it can only be a one foot by two foot sign. It is more stricter than the sign ordinance. So this prevails in this case. So if it's part of the home occupation, then the signs are regulated by what you can do with what's in this section of the ordinance. The other one is less stricter. It doesn't prevail. The more stricter always prevails.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe. Uh, go ahead, David. Oh, you think you're pulling up Greg's?
Yeah, I, I've just, I think I found the link where he had sent it to me. So hold on one sec.
I mean, just before you get into it, I have some general overarching thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah, in that, well, no, while you bring it up, just so people aren't left here waiting. That's general overarching thoughts about whether or not we should use the major home occupation reference, or if we should create a separate, you know, registered caregiver home occupation category. And my comment was something to the effect of, uh, going back to the beginning, right under item B. I'm not really sure, uh, cause I don't have the level of knowledge in the town if other home occupations exist. And I would be hesitant without knowing that to really inserting a whole host of new provisions into what is right now a fairly light process for uh, a home occupation. Uh, major home occupation. I mean, we can see from Dave's draft to us that he pretty much added all the new stuff. Yeah, and again, the items under major home occupation are kind of light. So I just I'm cognizant, or I, I think we need to be cognizant of if we start modifying this or reopening Pandora's box for any other major home occupations that exist. I, I simply don't know how many do, where they are, how they're permitted. I, I just, I don't know. And that's why my initial suggestion, and, and I can stay with this, it's not an issue. Whether or not we should create a separate use category for, you know, uh, you know, medical marijuana, registered caregiver home occupation. And so that's a general comment that to get this, to get this going, I, I'd like to have a discussion on that if anyone else wants to weigh in.
Betsy, Joe, would like to weigh in?
Yep, go ahead, Joe.
Major home occupations go through the planning board already in all districts. A minor home occupation doesn't. So if you put it under the major, it goes under planning board review already.
So I think right away that would change our, we would want it to be minor, i- if we're going to continue down this path. Because we know from the council that and frankly, myself, I, it should be a fairly straightforward process for them to be able to operate. But again, I still question whether or not it should be a minor or a major. I think we just determined that it shouldn't be major based on what Joe just said. But again, I'm still throwing it out there. Should we create a separate use category so that? Again, so if it goes under minor, how many other minor home occupations and are we going to saddle ourselves? And Joe, with all these new requirements that really are kind of geared towards marijuana operation. Uh, for, you know, I mean, a salsa company, a baker company, that is really not going to be odor issues there. And again, you can probably dispense with it, but I, I, um, that, that's my concern. Should we have a whole separate category?
Hershey?
So, um, I hear you, Greg. And I have to say, Joe, I don't remember ever having a major home occupation come before the planning board in three years. And I certainly know they're operating out there, so that I find that a little distressing. Um, I'm not sure what to say about that. Uh, but I, I actually like where it is. I feel like, um, despite the fact I don't really want to have these come before us all the time, and it was news to me that they do, but um, I feel like major home occupation is a great place to leave it. I, 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 I think sort of, I'm treating it slightly differently for the things that are really different about it than maybe other major home occupations is important. And I think David has done a great job carving out a few new sections, but other than that, you know, section four through whatever fourteen with some editing, you know, applies to everybody. And I don't, I don't think there's a lot of confusion in how he's laid it out in terms of carving out these special exceptions. Um, and in fact, to some extent, uh, you know, as it says in number two there, which is really just should these apply to others. I would think that, you know, at some point we would take that up as well because, you know, odor mitigation actually might reply to other major home occupations and a few of these others might apply to other things. So I, I actually think it should stay where it is and I'm okay with that. And if it means we have to sort of review or I don't, I don't even know what that process looks like, Joe. Maybe you could tell us more. Then I'm okay with that. Um, and while I've got the floor, I'll say this, David, thanks. Really, a lot of thoughtful work went into this. I know. I really appreciate that. And I think most of it looks really very good. Uh, I, I have one word of caution, and I think you already know this because the signage thing is just up, but for example, if lighting is already dealt with in residential areas, I would just refer to the part of the code that says that. Cause I believe that already is part of the residential lighting ordinance thing somewhere. That you have to have downward lighting and it can't shine in your head and has to be so far away. So anything that's covered elsewhere, you know, you don't want to have a redundancy. And it's not, I don't think this is stricter either. So I don't think we're restricting more. I think it's already there somewhere. So just a few of those little things, I think we may be able to pick up.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great also. So I can, I'll, I'll, I'll have a note in there and anytime where I can put in a note referring back to well, the next case we'll talk about solar, for example, referring to the, uh, site plan review process and the shoreline zoning and things like that, just by reference.
The only, and the only other thing I'll say is, um, I, I'm not, I, I think most of it is really great. I don't have a, a, a problem with almost all of this. Just one thing is, I think expecting a small, like, you know, home grower to put in an entire, I know these mitigation systems aren't really that costly, but you know, for somebody growing in a barn or a hoop house where they're on their own property and they're acres away from other people, to expect them to mitigate odor, I think is a bit onerous for a property owner. And, um, I'm just wondering if we can instead just, you know, refer to, to see that if there's, you know, an issue, then Joe Then Joe can work with the person and ask them after the fact to install something, but until there's an issue. And I guess, Joe, in in the ten or twelve years it's been legal and we've had registered caregivers growing, have you had a lot of complaints about odor?
Go ahead, Joe.
Yes.
Was that yes?
Yes, yep.
Yes, and and the other thing with the home occupations, there hasn't been any so-called major home occupations. Um, applied for in your last three or four years, and so most of them are minor home occupations. And that's where they've been.
So the guy running the garage on Lord's Lane, that's a minor occupation?
It's his garage and it's him doing the work.
Um, I would li- love, um, Joe, if you could, um, explain to the board and to the public, what is the difference between a minor and major home occupation?
Yeah, you know, it's all. It's basically. Minor occupations will be in a building, principal building or a building accessory to it. Not utilizing more than five hundred square feet of twenty-five percent of the gross floor area of the principal bill. They'll shop not include. The employment of any person not residing on the premises. Now, that's employment, so how do you define? Do they get paid, not get paid? How do you define employment? There should be no outside storage of materials or products on the premises. There should be no on-premise retail sales. Then nuisance of waste, discharge, offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat. Radiation shall be generated. No traffic generated more than minor home occupation greater than volumes than what normally expected in residential use. There should be no exterior signage. And no onsite advertising. And then you get into your ma- uh, major. And basically the same.
Well, right, like when I read it, I was like, wow, these like sound exactly the same. So what exactly separate, separate a minor and a major?
You can have two persons outside of the people residing at the residence. Can be employed, no more than two people can be employed in the major home occupation. And then exterior storage materials and evidence of home occupation shall be located or screened. So as not to distract residential or principal building in the neighborhood, no nuisance such as waste discharge, that's all we're saying. Signs for majors should be no larger than. Two square feet for each side of the sign.
So, Mike, I guess, so are they allowed? I'm just thinking a major and minor, if the only difference. Because we're basically saying in this draft. That. The sizes. Basically going to have to be the same. Right? Am I right? I I'm thinking to my, I'm thinking out loud. If that's the case, the only difference is if they employ people or not? Am I, am I, I I feel like maybe.
That's you're right, and if 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 we allow two caregivers to grow, then you're at a thousand square feet of canopy, and I think that might be the difference.
Right. The 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 other thing is the proposed language that I left, uh, that I have for both minor and major, uh. I want to say subdivisions, home occupations is that I use the same language, and the language that's in the ordinance. Is a major home occupation shall not include. The employment of any persons not residing on the premises in the performance of the occupation.
Okay.
So if you, if you live there and you happen to have two growers of. Father and son or something like that, or. Two people who live in the same house, married, not whatever. They could both legally grow, but they can't have people employed to come to the house, because if you're managing really what you are supposed to be allowed to manage. You don't need a squadron of people or two more people. Planting water and cutting, drying, whatever, but.
Though, though, David, I I have to say, the person I know who grows does it on the side and also does, is a general contractor. And I mean, he has a full-time job as a general contractor, so would be out of bounds for him to want to hire somebody to help come in and, you know, deal with his. I mean, you know, I'm not sure that's my judgment to make about how he manages.
Well, the the thing that. Should be said about this ordinance that it said before is. Chances are. When the uh, when the ordinance, if it gets adopted in whatever form that takes. Chances are. The town won't really know about. An issue until it's happening. Joe's not just going to happen to be driving around and go, I wonder if that's a, you know, place with this growing marijuana. If he can smell it. He could probably go, well, it doesn't meet the ordinance and. And if he finds out that it's a caregiver growing there, he'll say, we've got these standards, you, we're not supposed to be able to smell anything from the roof, from your property lines. And Joe's gonna end up working with them, which is why I originally put that language in there to give. Someone who didn't realize this is regulated, especially with the new regulation. You don't want to come down on them with a hammer. You want to be able to have the code office work with them and say. Okay, here's where I see you're in violation. How are you operating? Here's what you need to do. So.
Greg?
Thanks, uh, yeah, yeah. David, if you still can bring up my comments, at least on my end. I'd appreciate that. So I'm going to take a little bit of a a different approach or a different thought process. And. You know, if we're looking at a home occupation. Then the way I look at that is the the primary use is going to be for your residential sleeping, living there. So any use outside of that is really going to be subordinate. In other words, it's not the primary use of the building. And so. Depending on whatever one or where this lands, whether it's minor or major or some other category. You know, really, at the end of the day, for me, it's going to get into. Um, whether or not we want planning board review in the case of if it stays within the major home occupation. But again, I'm really looking at this use. As completely subordinate. And so again, I'm not, still not sold on whether it should be minor or major. I'm still thinking as we sit here and talk. That we could take what we're working with from Dave and just simply erase major home occupation and put in a new category, but I'm 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 not going to lose any sleep on that. Depending on how this whole thing shapes up, that is. But I look at again as a subordinate use and I look at what is compatible within a residential zone. And, you know, when we start looking at square footage, when we start looking at. Uh, retail sales or no retail sales, I just. Need to go back and and think about a couple of years ago, the whole big conversation regarding the medical storefronts. And so, you know, a whole host of issues were brought up, which resulted in the medical storefront ordinance. And so, you know, I look at what we did there in terms of allowing the medical storefronts. And I'm looking in. Again, I'll be at this this draft ordinance and I'm looking at certain aspects of it. Uh, you know, when it comes, you know, in particular to. Uh, item number three. A lot of what we're putting there, a lot of. Uh, what we're asking someone to submit to us, a building plan, a parking plan. Uh, proposed location of exterior lighting, a floor plan. The the concerns that I have is a lot of what this is saying at this point, and again, I recognize it's a draft. Is it's really starting to mirror and have a lot of attributes of what is a medical storefront, a store, a retail store. And so. From a residential perspective, I have no problem with registered caregivers and what they can do. But looking at its impacts on, uh, you know, what could be impacts on a residential zone. I'm I'm taking really frankly more of a conservative approach on that. Uh, I'm not in favor. Of retail sales coming out of here. Uh, one of the major items when we developed the medical storefront. Uh, from the grower perspective of why they wanted it was safety. They did not feel safe selling this out of their home. So you need to do a medical storefront. So here we are, if we allow retail sales, now we're allowing it again. Are we going to create an unsafe situation, or why would we even open the door to that? So I think, you know. Uh, I think there are some of those items we need to talk about. Because one of the things we can't lose sight of is when you're talking about this one thousand square feet, we keep referring to the grow area. And I get that, we're all to the canopy. But but let's not lose sight of the fact that the registered caregivers. Can also manufacture marijuana products and concentrates. Now, it can't be done to the industrial level where they bring in the chemicals and uh, and the process for the extraction. But they can still do it. There are still impacts. With added licensing. They can, they can do food products. Uh, and with an even higher level license, they can actually get into higher levels of extraction. So. First of all, you know, as I kind of in my own head, work our way down in terms of, okay, in a residential zone. What can they do now? What can happen right now? Right now, registered caregivers can pretty much do whatever they want. As long as they meet the other setbacks. If they want to build a barn, they can build a barn, as long as they meet all the other requirements. And then they can do what they want to do in there and grow. So the question that I ask myself is, okay, two caregivers can go in. They can have their thousand cumulative square foot of canopy. But let's not lose sight of the other items that they can do and the other things they can partake in. Which is something that I think is very important. That's why when we start looking at the square footage limitation, it really should be looking at a cumulative per lot. That encompasses the primary residence as well as the. Um, the any accessory structures out there. So. I I just look at what is a compatible use within a residential zone. This is not an issue of. Morals about whether or not it should happen or not happen. It it's happening already. The issue is about setting up sound zoning to protect. The residents in in the residential areas. So. I'm happy going to a thousand square feet, that's fine. It's a. But again, it should reflect it, a thousand square feet. Not a thousand square feet of grow area. It should reflect a thousand square feet cumulatively per lot. And so, those are, you know, a few of my concerns. Dave, I will ask, you know, if you can't do it, no big deal. Uh, but.
I found it.
That can receive my comments. So that's what I look at. We already allow retail stores in certain zones of town. So now, from this perspective, as we look at this and the allowed use in the residential areas. What is allowable? You know, s- signs are allowed, you know, and if that's the case under the home occupation, if we do a home occupation. Um. Then it is what it is. I'm not going to necessarily fight that one. But Hershey, you know, to your point, I understand what you're saying also about, you know, someone who wants to grow, maybe have a. The odor mitigation, odor is tied to the size, if it's going to be a big, you know, they're going to need more mitigation or whatever, but also. If they're out in the middle of their forty acres, it may not be a big deal. So maybe there may be a merit. To looking at this as a major home occupation. And the planning board could make that determination. But, you know, I look at right now in all the residential areas, what can happen next door to you or me or anybody else on this phone, uh, on the, on the Zoom call. So I'm looking at it frankly, a little bit more restrictive. I know that probably doesn't come as a surprise. Uh, you know, and so, um, I I'm not recommending any retail sales. I don't think that's, that should be allowed. Uh, in a resi- in a residential zone. Uh, again, I think a lot of these individuals primarily, um. Uh, again, we already heard, we we answered their call for creating a safer environment by creating the medical storefront. Um, and I think now we're going to kind of reverse that a little bit, and and I think we're introducing a brand new use. And allowing a lot more to happen in a residential zone. Uh, so. I would prefer my own preference. And I get that it's a, it's a collective effort here, so would be to look at a more restrictive process.
Thank you, Greg. Hershey?
So, um, a few things, Greg. Um. First of all, we've had medical, we've had registered caregivers in our town since it became legal, I believe eleven or twelve years ago. Um, and until we got to a gunquit road, let's be honest, there hasn't been a big like fight about this. Nobody seemed to care. Um, I don't believe, and maybe Joe can contradict me here, but there were a lot of complaints about it. Or problems. The very, um, the very essence of these registered caregivers is that actually they sell it from where they are. And a lot of them can't afford. A retail store, and of course, we've severely limited how many retail stores you're allowed to have. So that, by the very being, that's what they do. They grow it and people come and get it, and they have a number of patients. And first, the first time it was set up, it was set up that they were allowed a number of patients, whether it was twelve, or I don't remember. Twelve plants per nine patients, and now it has a canopy limit instead, but that's. That's exactly what they're doing. They're growing it to sell to people, and not all of them are going to be able to afford the capital. To have a retail store. So I don't, I don't think that's realistic. I mean. We have people who sell cupcakes down the street from me. We have a guy running a garage down the street from me. We have a drywall guy down the street from me. I mean, we have a lot of people who do have. What to me are, whether they're minor or major home occupations, they're big occupations and, um, and they get to do that. And they sell things from their home. And, you know, I don't see this as being much different. I see the. The parts that are different, I think that we need to talk about are things like odor mitigation, hours of operation. And and I would love to have a a very candid discussion about what's gone wrong on a gunquit road. And make sure our ordinance addresses those problems, so that when you live in a residential neighborhood, you don't have a nuisance neighbor like this.
Thank you, Hershey.
Sure.
Um. I. I see Greg, your points, and Hershey, I see your points, and I I'm definitely. Oh, I'm I'm struggling with. How much we've limited. Um, storefronts. That. Is to say no retail sales kind of feels like. Like, oh, like then we're really limiting them. I I do see these small. I see these small caregivers as farmers. That's how I, how I view them, um, personally. And farmers aren't in it for the big money. They're hard workers. They, um. You know. They they work hard for what they do, and I know that retail, or I mean, uh, registered caregivers. Working out of their home. I mean, this is a a full-time commitment, twenty-four seven. There, you never have a day off type of thing. I, that's where I struggle, because there are, there are the gunquit road. There's the gunquit road where it's absolutely. Shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue. There shouldn't be an issue like that in our town, and and how do we write an ordinance that? Prevents that, but at the same time protects. Um. You know, the farmer and that's. County girl and me, I can't, can't get rid of it. But, um. I, I mean, I see, I see both sides of it. I don't, I'd love to see, Ken, if you, do you have any comments?
Along the similar line, uh, it's their own property, but at the same time, obviously, we, you need to draw a daily line. I see the conflict that Greg was referring to. With our, our other facilities that we, our medical facilities that we allow to store for, so. I'm learning as we go. But at some point, it is, it is their property, but. How much we want to inconvenience their neighbors is my biggest. Concern, because the neighbors aren't the ones running the store, they're the ones that'll deal with the, uh. The follow-up from whatever it brings, so.
Thank you, Ken.
It's cool.
Uh, Greg?
Yeah, uh, I'm. Okay, yeah, I'll go go again. I just want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to talk.
Greg, did you want me to bring it? Did you want me to bring up your document?
Oh, sure, that's fine. At least people can see what I'm talking about. I.
Okay.
You know, they don't have to agree with it, but at least they understand, so I don't have to go through each. Each thing here. I think it's all kind of tied together really at the end of the day. I mean, there are other options. There's delivery, uh, which can happen. Uh, but again, I I just want to, you know. Be clear and 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 remember, at the core of it. When people become registered caregivers, you know, they're doing it for business. Uh, they are essentially signing up with the state to conduct business operations. Uh, if they're a farmer. Uh, if they're a farmer, uh, which there, there are, they are there, they can just become a caregiver. Uh, a caregiver is essentially, they can grow it on their property. We're not gonna bother them. But they're growing it for their own use and and some limited patients regard basically their family. That's the, that's the farmer. Uh, in my view, uh, again, um, I respect the position you're coming from. Uh, so again, as the, the basic issue for me is they're getting into it for a business and so we need to treat it like a business. And if we're concerned about another Agunklet Road, then the question is how, how do we stop that from occurring, which is why we're here today? So. But that being said, I just wanna, there are some points that we're probably gonna end up agreeing on perhaps. And that is, you know, the, a square footage limitation, number one, that's what the council asked us to do. And so. I'm not gonna disagree with what uh, David gave us that essentially we're talking about a thousand square feet. And again, a thousand square feet as a subordinate use here. It can be pretty substantial. If you look out your window and think about what can happen to, within your own neighborhood here. Um, i- i- in terms of what, what, again, what could potentially happen. And I think again, what we are gonna need to talk about is, you know, is it cumulatively per lot to include accessory structures? Or do we allow it just within a home and not worry about accessory structures? Again, I'm thinking about. The creep of whatever it is they're trying to do. So you're gonna grow in your garage, grow in your basement. But again, if that's grow area. They can go and build a barn out back, uh, and they can do their extraction. They can do their food processing. If you read the law and look at it, there's a whole host of other things that we're not including here, remembering that. We're dealing with registered caregivers who are going into this for business purposes. Otherwise, they wouldn't obtain that level of a license. So again, uh, you know. As I say right there, the general comment, we're really in my mind getting into attributes of what would be. And I remember this coming from Phil Sossier, uh, attributes of a medical storefront. Um, a- and so I, I, I get concerned when I see something like that occurring in a residential area. Um. Uh, going down to number six, uh. I'm not in favor of signs, however, it it would appear that it's already allowed to a limited extent, so I'm not gonna die on a hill over that one. Um. In, in again, item number seven, you can see, um. Oh, yeah, the, the, the delivery only. Uh, again, I'm concerned about traffic within neighborhoods. You know, we don't know what, where this will go. We don't know how big it will become. Everybody throws out a gunquit road. It could also be any other road. You know?
Thanks. We do, we do know, Greg. They've been here already for a dozen years without a substantial problem until a gunquit road. We have one outlier who's wrecked it for everybody. So tell me, what is it about a gunquit road that annoys everybody so much? And let's talk about that. Let's fix that. Whatever it is that annoys everybody. Is it the traffic? Is it the lighting? Is it the, you know, whatever it is, let's talk about what it is that really is annoying everybody.
Yeah, everything you just mentioned, re- retail sales included. Uh, cause that's, it's again, it's in a.
But it's not in and of itself retail sales. It's the traffic and people coming, going night and day. And then he has all this lighting on. And he's running this full-scale operation that nobody anticipated. I mean, that seems to be what's annoying people. Not that he actually sells things. I mean, people sell things out of their houses everywhere. We have farm stamps, we have cupcakes, we have drywall. I mean, you know.
Yeah, but again, we're, we're being asked here to come up with other indifferent regulations. To allow. Uh, in, in regulate what I'll broadly call the marijuana industry. Again.
It's already allowed though in town. It's been allowed, it's been allowed.
It is, and, yeah, and and now we'll be.
It's not new, the idea that they're gonna sell retail marijuana. That is not a new thing. That's been here for years.
I, I'm not gonna disagree with you, uh, but I, I guess I am disagreeing with you in terms of how we go about regulating it. So. You know, that, th- this is my position. I'm not saying this is where the planning board is gonna end. Um, but you know, this is, these are my thoughts and, you know, I'm entitled to them and I think. Collectively and cumulatively, you know, they, they, they can. Introduce all of the problems that we're trying to regulate. But I also think it's tied to the overall square footage. If we're talking. You know, a five thousand square foot building in a huge operation, that's gonna be totally different than a small operation. Yeah, and so, you know, I'm not really so concerned about. You know, uh, odor control, if this truly is in fact. A small operation. Uh, but again, I think we heard from Joe that they have received a lot of complaints. Um. And again, that, that's why it gets to my point of, is this a minor home occupation or a major home occupation or is it something completely different? So. You, you can look at my, my recommendation, my recommended, my, my comments. Does it mean we have to accept them? Um, but again, I look at a. Uh, one of these home occupations as being truly subordinate to the use of a home. Yeah, so it does concern me from becoming additional Agunklet Roads.
But it, it, the ordinance itself says a thousand square foot limit. Only two growers allowed, right? And let me just point out that a lot of the registered caregivers in our town actually don't grow in our town. I can name, well, I know of six of them that I, I've heard about that rent in other towns. They don't actually even grow here. So. For the handful of people who do grow here, we're limiting what they can do. And if we don't allow retail sales, we're basically killing their business because I don't know what they're gonna supposed to do with it. It's, I don't think it's a viable business plan for us to tell them they have to do home delivery now. And they're growing it in order to sell it from the houses, which they've been doing successfully, I assume for the last few years. So I don't, I just don't. Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's fine. In, in Hershey, we may come to some other resolution on that, which is fine. Um. You know, but again, I think we need to be careful of what we're allowing and introducing into. Residential areas, you know, right now it's. Anything can happen.
Well, I, I, I sort of disagree that anything can happen in that, I think, and, and I'm sorry Joe isn't here to talk to this. But a lack of enforcement is part of what happened on the Gunquit Road. That there were actually some things that he was doing that apparently were not within our zoning code. And they were not basically enforced and to the point where the town now. Has grandfathered him in because there's nothing left to do. You know, the town had to basically acknowledge this was going on and accepted it. And according to Phil, that meant we were now left without any kind of recourse. Which is terrible. So I, and I don't, you know, it's hard to know exactly where all that played out, but I feel like with proper enforcement, this wouldn't have happened. And maybe that's the issue more than everything in our ordinance. So.
Um, Amy, your hand is up in the picture. Is it supposed to be up?
Ken?
Uh.
Ken wanted to say something.
That's all right. You, you, uh, Hershey, you already. Insight to what happened. Me and Bernal both were asking, um. What the heck is going on in a Gunquit Road? Cause we haven't heard anything. But uh, you gave a good, a good overview, so I, we caught up. Thank you.
You're, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. But I'm glad that you under- you understand a little bit more now. Um, you can certainly go drive on a Gunquit Road. Um, Greg, were there any more, um, any more points? Uh, when you've gone through it that you specifically. Want to discuss or where, where that was at? Was that at the list?
No, I think broadly you understand my concerns or thoughts. I don't need to repeat them. Uh, I would just ask, uh, Joe, if you could distribute those so people just have them. Uh, what they choose to do with it's up to them. Did we lose Joe?
He went on a fire call. Amy, put it in the chat.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. What about Dave?
You mean David?
Yeah, looks like.
Did we lose David? Ah, we did.
Well, he's had it with us, I think. He's.
I guess.
We finally drove him off. We finally drove him off.
No, I do think, I do think that we've had a great discussion and I would um. Entertain a motion to, um, you know, table this discussion and revisit at our next meeting. If anybody.
I, I motion to uh, move on to the next agenda item and table this for our next meeting. And I swear I'll get my comments in to David in a more timely way.
If the discussion is to table to get more comments, then, you know, I mean. Uh, it'd be nice to kind of come to some resolution, but. Uh, I'm willing to wait until next meeting as well. That's fine. I'm okay with that. So I, I'll second that.
Great. So I have a second. Do a, uh, call Hershey.
Hi.
Uh, Greg?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Ken?
Hi.
Um, and actually, uh, because Manley isn't here. Our newest member may also vote. And you're gonna have to remind me.
Bernal.
Bernal. Bernal Bailey.
For now, I didn't realize it'd be voting, but anyway.
You don't have to if you don't feel comfortable.
You don't have to, you can abstain.
I'll stay.
Okay, and then Betsy Randall, I, okay, so we will um, table this discussion.
Go ahead. Order chair. Order of order, Roberts rule, since you know Roberts rules, um.
I'm trying.
Have a quorum, does an alternate vote? I'm just, I don't really know the rule, how it works. Amy, do you know? You're, you're pointing at me.
Just as soon I asked him and then he went to say that, I thought, wait a minute, no, an alternate does not vote unless it's. Uh, at the beginning of the meeting, you allow that person, you, you make a motion to allow that person to vote. So, so you're.
Thank you, Amy.
Sorry, I should have.
No, that's okay. It's all good.
That's okay. So, but we did um. Agree that we will table that discussion. I think that we, that we had. That was, that was a lot of information and a lot to think about. I, I definitely am kind of going both ways, so. Um. I think that might be a good, a good uh, decision. So the agenda. Item number two, can bring it up here. The review of the planning board charge for solar farm ordinance performance standards. And unfortunately, it looks like we lost David. So I would.
We try to get him back.
I mean.
You can just move on to the next item and wait for him to come back if he's able to get back on.
Yeah, so uh. I guess. Do I need to make a motion to, to? To go on, okay.
You, you.
So if nobody has any objections.
No.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna jump down to number five and welcome our new planning board m- member, alternate Bernard Bailey.
For now.
Or Bernal. No, isn't it, it says Bernard Bailey.
No.
It's Bernal.
It's Bernal.
Oh, in the, on the agenda. It's, says Bernard. Anyways, welcome. I wish one day we will all meet in person. Um. Uh, and the next, the what's, the other thing that's on our agenda is uh. The bylaws. I don't know, does anybody know if we need David? For that.
I can try and in on that. Let me take off my.
Thank you, Amy.
Hold on one second, guys.
No worries. I'm looking for the bio.
Um. So really, all that you guys were going to do was read through what he sent out, um. Where we were amending. The meeting language to reflect the current changes and change chairman to just chair. And I don't have it in front of me. Oh, there he is.
David, don't you dare leave us again.
Realistically, Betsy, all you're doing is reading through that, making the changes and approving the changes and um. Then we have to, again, you, you vote on it and if it passes, then we have to discuss it again in a second meeting. And then if that is, still stays the same, we have to, I believe, um. I don't think we have to do a public hearing because it's bylaws. So that's a David question.
Okay.
Um, so that's where we're at.
Okay, so. To look at um. Agenda item three, particular chapter A one four eight. Regular meetings, update the meeting language to reflect the current changes in. Amy, you said that is changing the word chairman to chair.
Yes, and it's um. Just stating that the meeting will start at seven o'clock. That um. Meeting will end if uh, there's no more information by nine o'clock. If no, no more information comes to in front of the planning board after nine o'clock. Um.
Now is there a chance to make it to midnight if we want? What are you kidding?
Uh, actually had it, I had my computer up in front of me, but I, I closed it out, so. Um, I think what you should do is you guys should look at that. This next two weeks and decide if you think it looks good. Let David know and then he can draft it and then you guys can next week vote on it because I don't have it in front of me.
I, I have it. Do you want me to share it and put it up or? It's not really. It's not really, okay, hold on. Let me get the right one. Chapter. There you go.
That is it.
That is it.
Awesome.
And so.
Can you guys? Can you hear me? This is David?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, they, my whole computer just went down, so I don't know what's going on. It, it just, I got a weird error message. So I am trying to get that restarted, but I, I'm talking through my phone so I can see you and everything, but.
Okay, I can walk you, walk the planning board through the changes to the amendment.
Okay.
Um, however, yeah, so this is the old, the old one without the changes made.
Yeah, so that, you know, right now it's, it states um, pretty much everything that's in there. The only change will be chairman will change to chair. Uh, language will change where it says seven and six thirty, it'll just say seven.
Mm-hmm.
Same with. By nine thirty, it'll say nine. Um.
Oops, sorry.
So, so David, I need to make them, uh, I need to entertain a motion. To approve these changes to chapter A one four eight.
I make a motion to accept the changes to the bylaw of chapter A one four eight. As described by.
I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
So, so. I get what we're doing here, but I thought we talked about eliminating the secretary's position.
Yes, that's in a separate. That's in a separate ordinance, a separate bylaw.
We're doing that next.
Got it, okay. I understood, thank you.
No worries. Is there any other discussion? On that? If not, I will call a vote. Hershey, Hershkop?
Hi.
Greg Zinser?
Yes.
Um, Ken Conley? And Betsy Randall, myself, CS. So now we will, I guess, vote on it again next week? Is that correct, David?
Yes, you, you had, so you have it back, well. To. Oh, as it's administrative, yeah, we don't need to do a public hearing on that, I don't believe.
I didn't think we did either.
Yeah. Um, but apart from that, yeah, so we'd do a second reading and um. Of that, I wanna, uh. Amy, maybe you and I could chat tomorrow, uh, just double and double check the. The advertising on that. I, I know that when it's been a sort of minor things like that, we've been able to do it almost as a. A Scribner's error. If it's, you know, just sort of, you're not changing the context and really just changing a meeting time by half an hour. I don't think it's a context. But I think um, it will put it on the agenda for next meeting of, and then you can do another vote on that.
Yes.
Hershey?
Or can we look at the bylaws to eliminate the secretary position as Greg reminded us?
Yes, that's the next agenda item. Uh, is to, uh. Oh, shoot, is it, okay, chapter A one four eight dash two officers. Number C. To strike a secretary shall be elected annually in the month of July by majority vote of the board. Said secretary shall serve for one year and shall be eligible for reelection. Uh, I will entertain a motion to strike the secretary position from the bylaws.
I motion that we eliminate section A one four eight dash two C from the bylaws.
Second.
Uh, got a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, do a vote. Hershey?
Hi.
Oh.
Oh wait, sorry.
Did Ken, did you hear Ken?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand the strategic nature of having the third. And did we just implement that when we lost the, the chairman? Chair. Prior, was that useful to have the secretary's position move up to vice in that instance? Or is that something we want to lose completely? Prior, was that useful to have the secretary's position move up to vice in that instance? Or is that something we want to lose completely?
Right, so, because we have Amy, we haven't felt the need to have a secretary. That is a very good point, to have, you have a backup to backup for chair.
And you'd have to modify a similar to Item B. Um, you'd have to have it act as backup, but the Item C is really technically me right now, but it's rather, it's a ministerial position that for me is rather meaningless, it's staff that's doing it. Uh, so, I mean, if you want to have a backup to the backup, then you would actually need to add that language in the absence of the chair or the vice chair, then that would fall to the, to the secretary. But again, at that point, if those two are out, you really can't act, uh, as a board. I mean, trying to take motions with three people would be very difficult. So, the original suggestion, because of the confusion that arose last week, was just to get rid of it in general. Uh, because it is really was just antiquated language that's just followed us for a long time.
So the secretary in that instance doesn't move up to to vice, if the vice moves to chair, okay?
No.
Understanding of your structure.
I see what you're saying, yeah. Exactly, yeah. Did you guys understand what he was saying?
Yeah.
The current language has probably been in the ordinance since before the town had much in the way of a staff, let alone a planning board secretary. I mean, a planning board administrative assistant, um, like Amy, so it's probably been that same way for a long time, but I'm sure someone would be there to record regardless, and now we have the items taped anyway. You know, Amy takes notes, so. It's kind of redundant.
Yeah, even the council doesn't have, have a secretary.
Interesting, didn't know that. Um, hearing no other discussion, I'll take a vote to eliminate Chapter one four eight dash two C. From the bylaws.
No, we already did the motion, you're gonna take the roll, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Call the vote.
Oh, it's been a long day. Okay, Hershey Hershkop.
Bye.
Greg Zinser.
Yes.
Ken Conley.
Yes.
And Betsy Randall, myself, yes. The, the yeas win. So, as Robert's rules. And it passes. Oh my goodness, thank you everybody for, you know, being patient with me today. But we do have to go back up now that David is with us to discussion item number two. The Town Council Memo Regarding Planning Board Charge of Solar Farm Ordinance Performance Standards.
I, I. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I just have to ask, um, because you just did all that, we automatically assume that Greg's voting in from the week before, we don't have to do anything with that. Now that we're taking it off, you know, like we voted for, for Greg to be the secretary last meeting. We've taken it, the position off of the bylaws, automatically was that defined?
You know what, I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it hurts to actually, uh, make a motion that as the requirement has been lifted, that Greg, uh, I don't know, resigns the position.
Well, I'm gonna fight that one.
I do think, I mean, I, I would.
I mean, it makes it cleaner.
Yeah.
Because we have to use Roberts rules.
I would, I would guess that we would wait until after the second reading.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can, yeah.
Well.
I would, I could actually make better from Greg.
You could modify the motion if you'd like and, and also vote that, and so you have a motion to also, uh, ceremoniously remove Craig from the position he didn't want in the first place.
We'll just wait till next week.
Okay.
Don't complicate things, David. Uh, modifying motions, um, yeah, David, would you mind going over and reviewing the planning board charge uh, for the solar farm ordinance performance standards?
Yes. I'm, I'm still trying to get my computer, computer running, so I have, I have it not in front of me, I'm, I'm trying again. Uh, I can give you, I, I can, no, I, sure, yeah, well, no, I can't see, well, I, me trying to see it on my phone is not gonna help. I was like, yeah, I can see, no, I can't. I can barely see you guys, so, um, I can give you the essence of it right now. Um, basically, my report is very similar to the way I pulled together the, the marijuana caregiver ordinance. Uh, in this situation, though, the, the, the ordinance has basically a list of uses that require just unique conditions because of the use, you know, we, uh, campgrounds, for example, are one, because we have to make sure that, you know, uh, various things, you know, might not apply to convenience stores, it might a camp, campground or something like that, so. The council asked the, or cast the planning board with looking at solar farms. Currently, there is a solar farm moratorium uh, on, uh, and, uh, so basically no solar farms can be approved at this time through the board. And, uh, in Jan, at the January meeting with the Town Council, they, uh, extended that by a hundred and eighty days. They really wanted to give the board a chance to look at the various issues. So, that being said, I pulled together an ordinance and where it is proposed to be located is, uh, underneath that similar type uses, like campgrounds. It actually, why I'm using campgrounds is that's the one that comes right before it in the ordinance. So, um, I don't have the entire ordinance in front of me, while I have a paper copy, um, but what I did is, and I drafted the ordinance based on solar farms, and they, the council had given the board a number of criteria that said, we want to look at this in regards to, um, uh, what?
Do you want the list?
David's muted.
He wanted the clear mitigation, that part, view disruption, property value impacts, decommissioning process, conservation impacts. Any necessary new definitions and any necessary amendments. That was the charge. What? His ear. David.
He's muted. Bet you're muted.
Wow, this is getting out of control.
Hey, I'm sorry, it takes it off of mute, apparently, when someone else starts talking. First time I had to do a meeting like this. Um, so, based on all of that, and my experience with solar farms and things that have come up in discussions before, what I ended up doing is taking those items and I put together a rough framework saying, here are things that we want to see, for example, emergency access. Um, there was a number of different environmental things that are unique to this type of use, or at least in my experience. A lot of times, these types of uses are looking to go into areas that in Maine have a lot of wetlands and things like that. Primarily because they're trying to develop, say, a twenty acre piece of, uh, piece of land. That in itself with the state is a challenge, uh, so I put some of those environmental standards in there, vernal pool setbacks uh, and the like. And like the similar ord, uh, the, the last ordinance that we had talked about, uh, I had listed a number of different uh, definitions that we probably also need to look at, at least adding a couple definitions to the, uh, zoning ordinance definition section in the ordinance in addition to looking at this exact ordinance. So, what I was hoping is similar to the last one, that the board could sort of make me aware of any kind of concerns that I haven't listed or if you oppose something and say, you're crazy, you don't need to see what, um, um, you know, selective cutting is for, you know, to get a solar line of sight kind of thing. Just, you could make that, uh, comment to me and I would gather all of the comments from the board, so you could send those comments directly by me. Uh, my hope would be then to, by the next time the board meets, to bring a list of everyone's comments who has reviewed the document under the same area. So if only one person puts a comment under retail sales and, and Greg says, hey, I, I don't believe this, we should still discuss that item. So, uh, you'll help guide me on, on where the, the ordinance should sort of go, if all that makes sense.
Yes, Hershey.
So, once again, David, thank you, this was a lot of work, I realize, and it was very detailed. Um, there are a few things that I think overlap that aren't within our expertise and jurisdiction, like environmental concerns when we have, and you did point out that they are subject to DEP and, you know, inland fish and wildlife, we'll deal with a lot of that, because you know, I know there are different types of vernal pools, for example, and identifying them, and then we get into all that, but my main concern around this ordinance wasn't, um, this level of detail, though I appreciate it all, and I think a lot of it's important. It's, it's more, um, figuring out where they should go and not go. And in your ordinance, you have them everywhere but in R5, it looks like. And, um, my concern was maybe we shouldn't have them everywhere. And so, I don't know how to figure that out. I went to the, the, um, main conservation group and the main Audubon put together this really complicated layered, well, not so complicated, layered GIS map that was supposed to be a way, a guide to where better to cite them or not cite them, and I'm not sure how actually to, to put like information like that into a zoning ordinance, so that, that's my concern. Not that they go through a major site plan review, they will meet the ordinance, I have no doubt about it, and that we can have things that are important in the ordinance about, you know, impacting your neighbors and buffer zones, but really, I just don't, I don't want, just like I don't want forty medical marijuana retail stores in town, I don't want forty solar farms in town either. So, I, I, I'm looking at this as a total land use issue around town and how we figure out where we cite them and don't.
Well, the, the easiest way to go about that probably, and I haven't thought it through a hundred percent, but the easiest way to go about it is to actually, uh, per, uh, put a new defin, in there, a new definition in the zoning ordinance for solar farms. And because right now it's being evaluated as a public utility, and public utilities are allowed pretty much across the board in the zoning, except for in the zone you mentioned. So, the, if we put in, if, if the board wanted to put in a use for safe solar farms, you could regulate it based on, uh, zoning district also. So we just include a new table and say, you know, major site plan not allowed uh, across the board. So that's, that's one of the easier ways to deal with it.
Do, do other people agree? Am I just, is this just me?
No. It's just you, but I'm definitely, I definitely haven't, I haven't had time to look it over. So, I'm just abstaining from comments at this moment.
Yeah, I, I will look at it and respond with comments, but I, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Okay, um, well, I mean, if, it, I apologize, it only got to you guys earlier this afternoon. Um, so, similar to the other ordinance, um, I guess, my, or, or I'll leave it to you guys, but if you want to each have time to go it, in it, uh, by yourselves and send me back comments, you can, I sent you a Word document, so you could actually uh, make changes like Greg did in there and actually highlight where he made, uh, at least comments in, in the, in the ordinance, that'd be really helpful. Again, I could bring that back. Um, I just wanted to put a basic framework together and items that I thought at least we should discuss it, uh, whether or not we regulate some of the things or not.
Great, thank you, David. Um, is there any more discussion? From board members? Ken?
Uh, no, I'd probably piggyback off of what, uh, Hershey had said. I'd read a few things about Eversource, how they were purchasing agricultural land that in certain states that hadn't had a zoning guideline for solar, and they were not inhibited, they went ahead and kind of overstepped their boundaries and used up some agricultural land and went to a, a town vote. And so far it went, because they weren't happy with what had happened to certain areas in the town, so it is, it's very important that we set that guideline before, uh, not saying the eight hundred pound gorilla's gonna come in and bump these things up everywhere, but it is a possibility, so.
Very true, thank you. Um, those, that, um, concludes, the items are on our agenda, there's no old business to go over. Um, I'll open it up for member comments, if anybody has anything else to say. Yes, Hershey.
Sorry, I, I know I've been very chatty today, um, and David, this is sort of for you, I think. Uh, I would love it if there was some way in our process of evaluating projects and, and, and applications, if we can somehow get the environmental concerns upfront.
Mm-hmm.
And not at the end. I, I feel like it's a strategy of some of the developers, and maybe I'm being a little cynical here, but, um, that they wait till the very end of a project because then it has a life of its own, and it's been approved, and now there's conditions, and, um, you know, and then they, then there's a lot of pressure on DEP and, um, inland fish and wildlife to compromise, and I really think we, we spent a lot of time on Bennett Lot Road, and we spent, um, some amount of time in MBD Solar. And I don't know what's going on with MBD Solar, but, you know, at, in the end, the environmental issues seem to have sunk it, and we could have saved ourselves a lot of uh, suris, as they say in Yiddish, a lot of sorrow, um, by getting to this stuff first or earlier, not at the end.
And that, and that's one of the things, um, that I tried to put in the, in the regulations, getting them aware that that's something that we're certainly gonna ask for. Um, and you're right, there, had we had a lot of feedback sooner on a subdivision that we recently dealt with, it could have saved us a year of working towards a solution when it, there wasn't one to be had sort of thing, so. Um, yeah, getting that information is, is very, very important upfront. One of the other projects I'm working in, different town, is for a solar farm. And, um, frankly, as, they, they had a preliminary plan of where the wetlands were located on the property, and when they had the final determinations where everything was spot, uh, or located, they had to go back and redesign, they managed to get out of all the setbacks, but there was a significant change to the actual site layout. Um, and, and we, that wouldn't have happened till the very, very end had, had we not required it upfront, so I agree with you a hundred percent.
So, does that mean it's sort of just on us to ask for that information upfront, or is there a way to put it, you know, make it part of the application process somehow?
That, it is one of the items that I have i- as a recommendation in this new ordinance that they have to have. It doesn't necessarily have to be ironed out when the board approves it with IFNW, but we need to be able to have something in hand that says, yeah, on the surface of, everything is working out right now, this is, you know, but we want to have at least the majority of it saying, yeah, you may need to tweak this corner of this, of this area of your, uh, air, uh, of your, uh, solar field because this wetland threat actually comes through here in a different manner. So, I mean, I, before it comes to the board, it'd be great to have some of those things, and actually with most solar companies, they're pretty darn proactive, because if a site doesn't work for them, they're not gonna waste time with the town. So. But yes, I agree with you.
So, David, we, do we just put that, we put that in the application that we expect that stuff to be done?
I, I've written it, they're in the standards right now. So, so basically, when someone comes in and they want to do a solar farm, the code office is gonna say, okay, you need site plan approval, and in addition to the site plan approval, you also have to comply with these special ordinances, uh, this special ordinance is specifically regulating so, uh, solar farms.
Okay.
So, I'm, I've, I've got that in there.
What about, I'm sorry, but what about other projects that aren't solar farms? Is there a way to put that?
Well, usually as part of the site plan review process, I mean, I, it's something that I start doing as soon as I start working with a client. I've been putting it in all my, uh, reviews, almost no matter what the review is, because you suddenly get a vernal pool on your property, it changes everything. I mean, it really doesn't move an acre of land almost into, instantaneously. So, getting all that upfront is, is really critical, and I don't know why some folks like to wait till the very end or not, but.
Thank you, Hershey, for your comments. I think Greg, if you have something?
Yeah, just a, a comment or maybe some consideration at another meeting, uh, the concept of public hearings. Yeah, just a, a comment or maybe some consideration at another meeting, uh, the concept of public hearings. Um, traditionally, I don't know if there is a requirement within town code that requires us to have it, what I'll call it, the bitter end. Uh, but, uh, I don't see why we couldn't as part of this process, just on both of these ordinances, because they both, well, one of them, the solar farm went to a moratorium because people got upset. But why can't we involve the public earlier on and have the, the order, the public hearing earlier on in the development phase? Uh, I think that would, you know, go a long way and solve any potential problems down the road. You meet the requirement, you have a public hearing. Doesn't have to be, again, unless it's in the code, which I'm not aware of, um, that says that we can't have it at any point during the time. And I would just advocate that, you know, before we get too far into it and say, hey, here's our final, you know, uh, home occupation caregiver thing and as well as the solar farm ordinance that, you know, we invite public in earlier on in the process for comments. So we can incorporate those if need be, rather than just waiting until the end and then passing it traditionally out of, you know, under some duress for timeframes and everything.
Yeah.
Just, just a concept, just a thought, you know?
Well, it's, it would be a similar vein on what we've been doing for, uh, any other development project, the subdivision, for example. We've been notifying folks, have any applicant notify folks in advance, um, of their planning board meeting. So I, I don't see the harm in putting an advertisement in there. Now, the, the issue would be that we can't send certifications on an ordinance amendment. So it'd just be putting it in a newspaper, putting it on the town's website. Unless we wanted to advertise to the entire town, but, um, I don't think you have the budget for it.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about when we have to do the required public hearing for the ordinance development.
Right.
Something here.
Yeah, well, we, uh, we could advertise it for the, uh, if Amy has time for this next meeting, at least so people are aware that it's out there or hopefully it's, it's out in the public, um, from watching this meeting or others. Get public comment back. I mean, it, it's always better to get comments upfront. So that'd, that'd be helpful, actually. Yeah, there's, there's plenty. People are really passionate about these things, the sites, because they do take up a significant amount of, of land area.
So my take on that is, um, an actual public hearing. I don't know that you can do that during the course of the discussions of the ordinance. Because we advertise that it's on the agenda, anybody's welcome to come to the meeting and discuss it with us. Pretty much every single meeting through it. Um, like David said, advertising a public hearing for an ordinance, review and discussion. I don't even know that the town council does that. I mean, I, I know what Greg's going with this because it's, it'd be great to get more people involved, um, to make the comments and help us make that, help you guys make a decision. But, um, I'm going to have to ask Tim on that and I'll talk to Joe a little bit more about it. Joe is back, by the way.
I, I think Amy, if, if it's just an ordinance change, if you're putting it on the agenda and it's a posted agenda anyway, as a discussion item, um, traditionally, if you're, if you're working on an ordinance, you can, you, the board can have sort of internal discussions at a public meeting like we are right now. Um, but yes, the board, if people in the audience in the past have wanted to talk, um, sometimes the chair would enter, entertain that, uh, I know, and allow comments to be made or, um, it would be nice to catch some, capture some of those comments before we went to a, a formal public hearing, but. But I think it's just advertising it on the website is more than enough.
Yeah, that's what, Joe, that's what we're saying that I don't think that we can actually hold a public hearing on an ordinance um, before, uh, as a discussion item. I, I, I'll have to ask. I know what you're, what you're saying, David. I know what Greg's asking for too, because every agenda posts, you know, like the ordinance changes for these two items are going to be on our agenda for a long time until we finally finalize it. Public has every right to come to any meeting and send us anything that they want as correspondence because of, you know, through that process. Whether it's, you know, if it was a public hearing, then I don't know. I don't know if we could do that. So I'll find out.
Uh, yeah, if, if you want to get back to mirror fight, come across the answer. I'll, I'll get in contact with you or Joe.
Thank you, Amy and David. Was there anything else?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Ken? Any member comments?
No, not this time.
Nope. Okay. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You don't have our usual. Or I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Awesome. Got two. Take a, take a roll. Hershey, Hersh Cop.
Hi.
Greg Zinter.
Yes.
Ken Conley. Betsy Randall. Yes. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, David.
Welcome.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Hi.
Yeah, she did halfway through. Is it off?
Not yet.
Trying to leave, it won't let me leave.